It is six thirty. I am gonna call this study session to order on December ninth, uh, two twenty-five. All of council is here. Some of us are in different seats now, so it'll take a while to get used to. But we have, uh, two items on the agenda for the study session, and then we will, at the end of our study session, adjourn the study session and then reconvene here into a special meeting and then, uh, adjourn into executive session, just we don't need to move up there. So, but the, the two items we have tonight are, uh, project downtown economic impact study, uh, results. I'd have a few guests join us here to talk about that. And then, uh, the project management information system overview and dashboard. So I'll turn it over to the senior manager. Kick us off.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council, and welcome to our guest. Thanks for being here. Um, the economic impact analysis has been part of our, our plan, our planning for, uh, our, our project downtown work, which has recently narrowed to a phase one of, of Main Street. And, um, you know, the purpose for that is just so that we have that additional lens, um, of potential economic impacts and implications for the work as we, as we go, as we go forward. So with that, I'm going to pause there and turn this over to our director of, of major projects, Adrian Burton, who's, I will point out also, this project was also co-led by our economic development director, Rachel King. So I'll turn it over to Adrian.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Adrian Burton, Director of Major Projects. So thank you for the opportunity tonight to present the findings of our economic impact study for Project Downtown. Uh, tonight we're gonna walk through what the analysis tells us and how the scenarios were constructed and what economic implications look like over a thirty-year timeframe. Before we get into the numbers, I just wanna briefly ground us in why the study was undertaken and why we focused on downtown. At council's direction during the march retreat, staff was asked to prepare an economic impact study to better understand the potential return on investment associated with Project Downtown following the adoption of the council plan in, in twenty twenty-four. So downtown, it's the har- heart of Littleton culturally, economically, and historically. And council is consistently identified as a priority area for reinvestment. It's one of the few places in the city where people come from every neighborhood. And when downtown is healthy and vibrant, the entire community benefits. So at this moment, downtown is also part of the city with the greatest project readiness. After years of planning, public engagement, technical analysis, and adoption of the concept plan, we finally have a clear, community-supported vision and enough foundational work completed to meaningful evaluate, meaningfully evaluate long-term economic outcomes. So that's what made downtown the right place to start. So this isn't about elevating downtown above other areas. Littleton has reinvestment needs citywide, and those efforts will continue. But downtown is the first major district where the pieces are in place to move planning to action. But downtown is the first major, uh, sorry, the, so that readiness gives us a unique opportunity to understand the economic implications before proceeding further and to build tools and capacity that will ultimately support reinvestment across the entire city. So before we begin, I just wanna emphasize one point upfront. The study is not a land use recommendation, not a proposal to change zoning or density, and not a commitment to pursue any scenario. It is a decision support tool. It's a point-in-time analysis, what is possible based on typical market response to different levels of public investment. So next slide, please. So tonight you'll hear from several, from several members of our consultant team representing Matrix Design Group, CGF, Spark and Halo, and Arland Land Use Economics. Um, their role was to apply nationally-recognized methodologies, including in-plan modeling, and to ensure the analysis remained grounded in real-world economic behavior that we commonly see in our peer communities. So I'm gonna turn it over really quickly for introductions, if you can just say your name and, uh, what, um, consultant team you're with.
Good evening. I'm Nick Malphi with Matrix Design Group.
I'm Kyler with Spark and Halo.
Eric Hiraaga, Chief Strategy Officer for Matrix Design Group.
Jen Todd-Goyen, Director of Planning for Matrix Design Group.
Lily Jenny Anso, CGF Architects.
Arlene Toneywaki with Arland Land Use Economics.
So thank you. So we'll, I'll turn it over to the team to get started.
Great. Thank you so much. So today's presentation will focus on six major topics. Of course, we'll begin with our project purpose, going into a little bit more detail than, uh, Aiden was able to talk about today. We'll talk a little bit about why it was in place, why do communities choose to do that? We'll share some comparative case studies. We'll talk a little bit about how we use the Littleton context in our analysis, which we'll then share with you and wrap up with some key takeaways that kind of summarize everything that came through steps one to five. So for our project purpose, uh, here we're looking at how we got here and what are the anticipated outcomes of our work. As we heard earlier, this is a point-in-time analysis of downtown that builds on a strong legacy of existing planning guidance. The economic impact analysis will demonstrate the extent to which different capital investments are able to spur development, business growth, and contribute to long-term economic vitality. This will equip you with information to communicate Project Downtown's value to stakeholders and potential funding partners, as well as understand the impact of those investments. The analysis shared today will inform your, uh, your efforts to prioritize investments, to deliver community benefits, to support the community's long-term vision, and again, to show, you know, where that investment can provide the highest public value to sustain long-term growth. In this section, we'll talk a little bit about the importance of investing in place generally and what happens when we see communities choose to do that. Littleton's assets and amenities really exceed what you might expect from a community of this size. Not only your vibrant, historic downtown, your strong small-business community, the outdoor recreation opportunities, your strong commitment to arts and culture, the multimodal connections that increase access to all of these amenities, and offering still that small-town feel even with all of these benefits. What we wanna talk about is how all these contribute to creating a special place here in Littleton. You can build on that special place you've already created. This is done by, uh, investing in your public spaces. When public entities choose to invest, private entities often follow suit. It provides the confidence needed to put their money into redevelopment and development projects. These projects then attract new people who will live, work, and spend money in the new developments. This will then attract higher-quality retail, once they're starting to see the foot traffic and increased activity that then attracts employers. All of this creates new revenue that can be used to reinvest into public improvements, kind of fulfilling that feedback loop. You have a really robust financial toolbox, as you can see here on this slide. Strategically leveraging public resources to invest in those high-return, high-impact projects can strengthen your local economy, increase activity, and grow revenues. Guided growth, which is achieved through both monetary and policy decisions, will strengthen Littleton's character, reflect community priorities, support future investment, and create a vibrant place. Planning for new development will ensure that the new development fits Littleton's scale, your character, while creating clear expectations and certainty for residents, developers, and city staff. I'll close out this portion of the presentation by emphasizing that Littleton is really well-positioned to strategically guide growth going forward. You are ahead of the curve. This is the time to step in and decide what path you wanna follow going forward. At this time, I'll hand over the presentation to Lily, who will walk us through comparative case studies.
Thank you, Jen. Um, hi, everyone. Um, I'm gonna quickly walk through three comparative case studies that we would thought would have great lessons that can be applied to downtown Littleton. So our first case study is Close to Home. It's Denver's Rhino, uh, district. River North started out as, uh, the industrial core of Denver with factories, warehouses, and rail yards. Uh, but by nineteen seventies, those users have emptied out, and low rent attracted artists and makers. And by the nineteen nineties, the neighborhood had a completely different feel and, and a different energy. And in two thousand and five, the area was rebranded as the, uh, Rhino Art District. And that rebranding effort really brought new focus, uh, to the area. In the last twenty years, Rhino has grown dramatically and still has so much more room to grow and expand. We're seeing new offices, residential hotels, and even event spaces go, uh, go up here. And that growth is bringing new retail, new restaurants, new coffee shops and bars, and, and shopping centers as well. Um, so let's, uh, take, uh, talk about how all of that took place. A, a two thousand and three planning effort identified Brighton Boulevard as the corridor that needed to change and improve. By two thousand and fourteen, the city committed thirty million dollars to rebuild Brighton as a walkable, multimodal, um, street. And so in total, around fifty million dollars was spent, um, for public investment. It sparked the interest in the private sector, which has since developed over nine thousand residential units and increased the tax base in Rhino by fourteen hundred percent. And this additional revenue to the city can pay back for those original loans and later generate surplus. They can go back into the city, uh, to finance and support additional public improvements. This is exactly sort of what, uh, circular investment that Jen was speaking to. And so as Rhino continues to evolve, efforts are being made to preserve its historic and artistic character. And, you know, as we accommodate, especially as we accommodate new development, and these historic warehouses are now becoming offices and shops and restaurants and bars, um, that we, we all frequent probably. Um, so to summarize, uh, and to bring it back to Littleton, you've recently adopted many new plans um, and that have great recommendations within them. The next step is for you to identify, uh, which project should be prioritized and, you know, in terms of finance, financing. And so the question, how can we be really strategic in identifying public improvement projects that can generate return investment, as it did in Rhino, a fifty-million-dollar public investment project uh, that spurred over eight hundred fifty million dollar of private sector investment? And it is projected to bring in over two billion dollars in the near future. Okay, we're gonna switch scales, and we're gonna move, uh, to another case study, a much smaller project that is located in Castle Rock for a park known as the Festival Park. Um, we thought this was a good comparative project to study, um, in comparison to Littleton's own Bega Park downtown. One of LDDA's goals is to redesign Bega Park, uh, to be a more active and inviting, uh, place for locals and visitors. Well, Castle Rock did just that. It redesigned Bega Park to be a more active and inviting place for locals and visitors. The city sought to redesign the park to become one of downtown's open-space anchors. It invested over six million dollars to redevelop it, and since then, it has parked over sixty million dollars in private investment around the park. The new development around the park ranges in around three to five stories with office, retail, and residential. And the festival park has essentially become the catalyst to create new places to, you know, for people to live, work, shop, and play. And so, uh, the festival park became the anchor that showed the development community that Castle Rock was serious about its downtown. It signaled that the public sector was investing first. And because the park became a true everyday destination, not just for events, um, it, it, it brought people to downtown, you know, walking to downtown and spending more time here and showing up for, uh, the programming that happens within the park as well. And all of that has translated into better sales for local businesses, stronger leasing on the ground floors for the retail units, and then even new apartments filled up faster. Okay, last study here is, uh, we wanted to share with you an example from Lancaster, California. Uh, we felt that this particular case study could be applicable in the upcoming street improvements that we have identified throughout downtown and even potentially apply to Littleton Boulevard as well. Lancaster Boulevard was the town's historic main street that has become overly congested. It had five lanes of traffic going in, uh, in both directions, narrow sidewalks. Uh, essentially, it felt too wide, too fast, and businesses were failing along it. The city redeveloped nine-block stretch by creating two lanes of traffic, wider sidewalks, um, and, uh, created a central promenade for a median with diagonal parking, trees, and flexible spaces to support events. The total investment back in two thousand and ten was about forty million, which included twelve million, um, to, for streetscape improvements. Next slide. So as a result, the private sector followed with over a hundred thirty million dollar of investment, generated a total output of two hundred seventy-three million. The construction effort generated eleven hundred jobs, and then an additional eight hundred jobs were permanent jobs that created as a result of forty new businesses opening up along those nine blocks. Property values increased along the corridor, and the city saw sixty percent reduction in auto-related accidents. Um, and, uh, lastly, I would say, uh, the, between two thousand and ten and two thousand and sixteen, the tax, tax base nearly doubled as well.
When you say tax base, you're talking about property tax?
Oh, oh, tax, sales tax, employment tax, yeah. Okay, we're gonna switch, uh, to, uh, discuss the contextual factors that really formed the baseline and informed our work. Um, the foundation of our work was based on recently adopted plans, including the downtown Littleton Plan, the downtown, um, Mobility and Streetscape Plan. And we also reviewed your recently adopted comprehensive plans, so that's the land use, transportation, and economic development. So what we did was we pulled all the physical public improvement projects that were identified within, uh, uh, on, across all these plans for downtown. We then grouped and mapped those and identified where those projects fall and looked at for places where multiple efforts overlap. That helped us pinpoint the areas where targeted investment, uh, could have the highest impact of, and deliver the most positive improvements. Some of these projects include Main Street, which is, you know, the city's already moving forward on that, which is great. Uh, the gateway entrance into downtown and improvements along Nevada Street, Alamo Avenue, and Littleton Creek. We looked at where development could realistically happen around those areas and what type of projects would make sense, especially on empty parking lots and underutilized or underdeveloped, uh, properties. I'm gonna pass it on to Arlene.
Uh, thank you. So we looked at three different scenarios for the downtown area. The first scenario was an ad hoc investment scenario, and that basically is a no-build scenario. It's very reactive. You're just doing maintenance repairs as things come up. The medium investment scenario is really focused on Main Street. And then the maximum investment scenario looks at, um, actually three different, um, four different areas, Main Street, Alamo Avenue, Nevada Street, and Prince Streets in terms of improvements. And we did, and we used numbers based on the Project Downtown Plan. Next. And so again, the ad hoc investment scenario, it's really reactive. It's basically maintenance and emergency repairs. Um, over time, these costs, um, will be something that you can't really control. They'll be, um, and they'll likely increase over time. And so, um, just, um, just a scenario that is just really, um, as minimal in terms of what you do, um, that...
I had a question about that. The one thing I didn't see, uh, was the economic kind of impact of this scenario on here.
So, um...
That would be basically the, the baseline.
It's sort of like a no-build baseline. So what we ended up doing with that, and actually, maybe I should get through this, and then I'll go through that one slide that discusses it. So instead of trying to enumerate it, what we did is we used some case study research in order to help answer that question. So the medium investment option is really focused on Main Street. It's about thirty-six and a half million in street improvements. That includes placemaking, streetscape, pedestrian space, lighting. We're addressing parking. We're closing the street down for special events and enhancing the pedestrians' experience overall. So the maximum investment of, um, option is about ninety-four million dollars in overall investment. Again, it's Main Street, Prince Street, Alamo, Alamo Avenue, and Nevada Street. Um, and it's, um, what it really does is enhances the downtown grid, so it's not just a corridor. It's actually a, you know, downtown district, becomes a downtown district. So in terms of the strategic growth framework that we looked at, um, we, um, again, there's the ad hoc no-build, so that's sort of a me, a zero scenario, and we'll discuss some of the impacts a little bit later. The medium scenario really does focus on Main Street as well as the RTD parking lot area. So we assume redevelopment happens there. And so that scenario results in, across all different land use categories, about eight hundred and forty thousand square feet, um, overall. And then the maximum scenario, which includes the, you know, ninety-four million in public improvements, results in investment equivalent to about three-point-eight million square feet. Lily's gonna talk about where that actually, um, takes place, because we were very careful about some of the assumptions that we made.
Right. So we wanna acknowledge that we recognize, um, that Littleton's community really values what makes Littleton's, you know, the city of Littleton is unique, and that is its intimate scale and character. Currently, zoning allows for three-story buildings, um, within a downtown core. And that's the area you see on the map that's shown in yellow. Outside of downtown core, um, along the periphery, we identify surface parking lots and underdeveloped areas as a potential to, for slightly taller buildings going up to five stories and maybe slightly more. Next slide. So if the market can support four- to five-story buildings, we wanna make sure the city has policies in place, like zoning and design standards and guidelines, that would make them feel more like three-story buildings, even though they, they would be taller, five, uh, five-plus stories. And this is possible through things like upper-story setbacks and overall building enassing strategies that can help make a larger building actually feel very consistent with Littleton's character and vernacular style. And as you saw in the previous slide, uh, we kept anything that's taller than three stories a- along the periphery, again, where there isn't much development there today. Um, and, yeah, preserving the downtown core to maintain its kind of uniqueness and the quality that everybody, uh, admires. And I pass it on back to Arlene to talk about the economic impact analysis.
Great. Okay, so this is a depiction of the analysis for the city of Littleton. Um, so I'll walk through, basically what we do is we start with one-time construction. So that's construction of public improvements. It also makes an assumption about construction of housing offices, hotels, retail, and the subsequent taxes that result from all of that. And so we look at the construction. We also look at operations of these businesses that, that result from this initial investment. Um, we look also at the indirect impacts, and we do this through some software that I'll discuss in the, in a few moments. So, um, it's, it's really looking at some of the business-to-business transactions, because every business has relationships with other businesses. They buy and sell from each other. And what we try to do is we try to capture that in this analysis. The other thing is that through using this, um, software, we're able to really sort of hone it down to the city of Littleton. We didn't look at surrounding communities. We really did focus on Littleton. There are also induced impacts that we try to measure as well. That is household and employee consumption, you know, assuming some new household. There would potentially be some new, um, employees in the downtown area. And then this all results in just new jobs, um, incomes, um, output, that's basically GDP, but that's also revenues, and then taxes. And, um, I'll talk a little bit more about the taxes. So next slide. So the economic impact, um, we essentially divide that into one-time impacts as well as ongoing impacts. So your one-time impacts are really sort of construction-related. So they include the public improvements that you'll be making along the streets, as well as private development. And this includes spending on materials, jobs and payroll for construction workers, local spending by those workers, as well as services such as architecture, engineering, financial services, et cetera. So then, so that's the one-time impact. And then you have the ongoing impacts as a result of the new businesses, households, et cetera, that's created. This occurs every year after the projects are built, once, you know, things are somewhat stabilized. So they include the business-to-business transactions, employee spending, um, on, you know, food, retail, and services, household, um, household spending if new housing is added, as well as visitor spending, because we are assuming a hotel, um, I think in the maximum scenario. So it assumes some new visitors as well as their spending overall.
Chief, sorry. Do you mind if I ask a question now, or would you prefer if I were?
Uh, go ahead and ask.
Okay. I have a question. That's, that's fair. That's fair. That's fair. I'm waiting for questions now. Um, I was just really curious about why there is an assumption for a hotel in the maximum development scenario and not one with the medium development scenario.
Oh, well, that's actually a good question. I think...
Thank you. Everyone wants...
Yeah.
We have an assumption that you were not gonna ask.
That's a good question. So the medium investment scenario was really sort of honed in on like underutilized parcels, vacant parcels in that immediate downtown, as well as RTD parking area. And the maximum scenario, we actually looked along Santa Fe. And so the assumption for the hotel actually put it in sort of the north-west cor- corner of Bowles in Santa Fe, that, that vacant area, just because it's got highway access location, that's not necessarily where it would go. But it's just an assumption that we made, just based on knowledge that we have. So we put one hotel there.
And higher-density development.
And, and that also has higher-density development there as well. So, um, we could shift it, but, you know, in general, that, that seemed to make sense to us at that point in time.
Okay, so you, you think that in order for that to happen, the catalyst would need to be the maximum development scenario? You don't, you think that the medium development scenario would not result in a, a hotel?
Oh, um, well, that's, um, the medium investment scenario could result in a hotel, provided that, you know, that happens, there's response by the private market. Obviously, there's factors sort of out of your, your control to some extent. But, you know, it is a possibility, I think, in the medium investment scenario as well. Probably towards the, you know, the edges, but, um, the, the western edge of that downtown area potentially. So we didn't exactly pinpoint, um, but we made just some assumptions about general locations, and it seemed to make more sense in that maximum investment scenario.
Okay, thank you. I, I, I just, I have some, and I don't wanna derail this, and I can ask some of this at the end. I just have some questions about the, the assumptions that are being made about, um, the private to public... the private to public ratio of investment. So in the medium scenario, I think you'll had it at six to one, private to public. Maximum, uh, investment scenario, you had it ten to one. I don't know where that comes from, and I'm, I'm, I have a lot of questions about those assumptions. Also worried that if we're making those assumptions, and those, and I don't know where, what the basis is for the assumption, that then if we're making our investments based on those assumptions and the resultant analysis that's, that you all have provided here, that we're relying on market conditions as they are, or sort of as we wish and hope that they continue to be, and whether, you know, if the market tightens, private market, uh, private sector tightens up, that assumptions that underlie the entire analysis might not stand up. Yeah, well, and I think to piggyback off that, I think the fact that our economic development team is having, you know, discussions, that's already on the kind of the whiteboard of ideas and things that might happen in the ad hoc scenario, basically, um, to say that it only would happen there. That's why I asked the question about the ad hoc, uh, because that's basically the control. If we don't do anything, what would happen?
Right.
And so I don't see a delta in between.
Yeah, I mean, we could go into, that, it's really hard to, you know, sort of guesstimate what that would be without the, um, without the public investment, and that's where we would look to some of the literature. I would have to say the return, um, scenarios, both the six to one and the ten to one, they're based on some of the case study research. And so I think in general, uh, overall, I think Lilly presented some pretty decent returns, but I think in general, what we've seen is, is max, like sort of a ten to one. So we did try to keep it within those overall guidelines as well. I mean, the, the, one of the reasons why we looked at it over a thirty-year period of time is that because during that time, there's gonna be ups and downs, we're sort of heading into a downturn, but it will probably be then followed by a period of up as well, which will then, so if thirty years, if you do kind of a straight-line scenario, you're kind of balancing out your ups and downs.
I also have some, um, questions about the assumptions on slide thirty-one. My understanding is that the property at Bowles and Santa Fe is not for sale and probably won't be for sale unless something has changed. We still haven't decided what we're doing with the Littleton Center. That's probably a long-term thing, and Geneva Village. So, and the other two, so I mean, two out of the four of these assumption areas just may not come to fruition due to other factors.
I think that's a cool point, and these are all areas that are underutilized. I mean, all those right now are.
Right, I mean, but my understanding is a candy organ is not gonna sell that property. Now, maybe these will change.
Well, I think the fundamental thing is we're assuming we're gonna change the basic conditions of the economy by making this investment.
The market will drive it, right? That's the.
Just a comment on the, um, the nature or kind of level of the, of the, the analysis. I know that the team and even in this session, we're, we are trying to not to make assumptions or about specific development sites, uh, because they are private property interests that do have ongoing discussions and things like that. So I know that, that the team can certainly correct me, but I know that the analysis is based on trends that have been studied, observed, and, and other similar kind of, kind of reinvestment areas. I do think that the questions about, um, where the ratios come from, or what's kind of possible at a scale level for Littleton are good questions. See, Joel, I think they're.
Thank you.
Wow.
Suddenly, I'm sitting next to the superstar.
I, I know Rachel can kind of comment generally on the kinds of things that might happen within those, those kind of levels of, of investment, might be able to tie some of what we're, um, what we're hearing to potential in, for Littleton. So I, as we talk and have questions, I think that might be a, a good way to think about it.
Can I just ask one more question about the six to ten? So is the six to ten based on those three case studies, or is it based on more case studies? Because like, your big case, case study is Rhino. That is a completely economically, I mean, that, that was a blank slate, and we are not a blank slate. And, and Lancaster, when I drove through Lancaster in the eighties, there wasn't much there, right? Or actually nineties, I'm not that old. So, you know, I think Castle Rock is kind of the closest one, is, and is that, is that the six, or, or where did it come from?
I think Castle Rock was the ten to one. So basically, we bracketed it at ten to one. The six to one just really related to this scenario that we developed. So, um, just think of ten to one as kind of the big brackets that we try to work within. Does that make sense?
But did it come from more places?
Only if it came from one, I think it's just generally in the industry, when you see that, that's kind of the ratio you see, generally speaking.
So the ratio is one dollar of public investment springing ten dollars of private investment, or one versus six? And so I want to clarify, it's a little different than when you're going out and working, uh, with the investment community. They're looking at coverage ratios, one-point-two-five to cover debt service annually and those type of ratios. I want to kind of segregate the, the financing element versus, uh, the public-private, um, ratios that we're seeing here.
What we could do is kind of tie all of these questions together in a discussion more towards the end after Arlene gets through her few more slides, and you guys get to see more of the numbers, um, being added to the assumptions and where they're coming from, um, in the modeling. But, um, we will have plenty of time to address some of these in a little bit more detail, um, especially council member growth, your point about particular parcels. You know, those, there are not any parcels, no parcels that are identified in the assumptions or in the modeling. It's, it's just from that consultant's eye, right? Where are those ripe opportunities that exist, um, on the broader map when you're looking at downtown and the peripheral areas? So it happens to be that that particular corner is one that was identified because of the use in contiguous properties and other factors, um, not anything related to, um, ownership or history or, you know, any, any individual information about those parcels. So.
Well, it just concerns me, I, I could see where that empty lot looks very appealing for something that, um, would be really great for downtown Littleton, but when half of the, two out of the four may not be appropriate, and we're basing assumptions that these areas will be developed when maybe they won't, maybe others, other ones will, who knows? And then I just think we have to be a little bit careful.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe they won't. The other, the balance to that is because it's a thirty-year model or a thirty-year, um, assumptive model, it, it does provide that flexibility and that opportunity to say, well, maybe in twenty years, something might happen with a lot, right? We, it, it's really, really hard to see that crystal ball that far down the road.
It's really just saying that the investment is gonna drive enough demand in that time, that these are the areas that, in the realm of possibilities, things could happen. It's nuts.
Could happen.
And your market will care about it.
They all could on this whole conversation.
That's what economic forecasting is.
I understand that, but you want to make sure that your assumptions are, you know, based on something that doesn't have a lot of issues or challenges with it.
That's a fair question, and I think we can get to a lot of these points, um, in the discussion after. It was comfortable to everybody.
Can I also add that we didn't, you know, we didn't go to the level of nuance of identifying every available, you know, project within the yellow, like the yellow portion of the map. That also has an immense opportunity for development. We just didn't go that far, and maybe, you know, down the line, a five-story building would be appropriate in certain strategic places. LODO did that, if you, if you guys recall, very strategically identified different areas that where they could break that height limit. So maybe that's another approach that could happen. There's so many nuances that we didn't kind of spiral off on, there's different ways that the development could take place, and really it's the market that's gonna respond.
I'm sure you mentioned this, but, um, there's a character to downtown Littleton, and if you start putting high rises in it, it changes the character, even if you have a, a building with a setback.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
And I just to, um, clarify too, we're really in the draft stage of the kind of finalizing the report, and so we'll develop a report. What we could also incorporate is more like an FAQ that just answers a lot of these questions and, and really just provides more clarification around how this analysis was developed and, and really what, what it all means and how, how we should look at it.
I'm just really excited about the possibility of a legit hotel downtown. That's, you know, I just, that's all it says.
So, um, basically another depiction of just the relationships amongst the different businesses that occur as a result of, you know, some of the public investments that will be made. Suppliers, business households, and all of these relationships just circulate throughout the economy. So, um, we did use, um, InPlan software. It's a, um, it is highly regarded in the industry. It was created in nineteen-seventy-two by the U.S. Forest Service and the University of Minnesota. It's now private, but it's run by researchers from the University of Minnesota. There's a wide vari- a, a variety of different users. They range from academics, governments, including the state of Colorado, economic developers, corporations, and nonprofits. And it's based on Leontev input-output economic model, which was awarded the Nobel Prize in Economics in nineteen-seventy-three. So we use it here to estimate employment, labor income, and output for the city of Littleton. And when I say output, I sort of mean GDP, some sort of equivalent is basically all the revenues, all the goods and services that are produced in, in Littleton. So, um, we also measure that fiscal impacts, and sometimes in this type of work, we say economic impact, and it really means the economic impact plus the fiscal impact, but the fiscal impacts really are the analysis of the taxes that are potentially generated. And so again, we have the one-time impacts as well as ongoing impacts. The one-time revenues occurred for construction only, and they only occur one time. They include the sales and use tax on construction materials, your plan review fees, building permit fees, your impact fees, um, your inclusionary housing ordinance fees, as well as property taxes during construction. These are all front-loaded. Um, they either go, we only measure the, the revenues that go to the city of Littleton and the Littleton DVA. The revenues that are ongoing, they occur every year once the project is built and occupied, and they include real and personal property taxes, sales taxes from new spending, um, restaurants, et cetera, indirect sales taxes, which are the ba- basically the business-to-business transactions, and lodging taxes if a hotel is included. And, and as you know, we did include an assumption about one hotel. So, um, depiction of how this all is sort of how we analyze it, so again, we have the one-time impacts that are shown on the left-hand side. It's a construction of public improvements and private development. It includes, you know, can your construction cost, your labor income, as well as the revenues. It also includes your taxes, fees, and permits. And then we have net ongoing impacts that includes the, um, it includes operations of your offices, your new retail, your residential, as well as your sales. That translates to jobs, households, and visitors. And so what we do is we measure the value of operations, um, as well as the taxes that are generated from just this ongoing new business. We measure the multipliers, the indirect and induced, um, effects. We do that through the software, InPlan, and then what we do with the ongoing effects, so rather than saying every year we've got this number, we net present value that over thirty years, and we use a five percent discount rate to get to one number, which is the total economic and fiscal impact. So the ad hoc investment scenario, kind of getting to your question finally. So one thing I wanted to mention was that downtown Littleton's fortunes really are tied to the city, regional, and state efforts, so really as the region goes, or the city goes, downtown Littleton goes. So if you only have ad hoc public investment, you're just maintaining, you're, you're sort of reactive, you're just making repairs, there's really no net new economic and fiscal benefits. There's a danger of disinvestment, because all the communities around you are investing in their downtown areas. There's not that private investment that fall, that typically follows public investment. We often see that in the metro area. The scissors or dollars start going elsewhere. People are spending money, they go to downtown Castle Rock or Parker or what have you. So we did look at some, um, case studies from the Brookings Institute, and there is a danger of long-term underperformance. Basically, what they did is they compared cities that invested versus those that had not. And there is also a harder recovery from economic downturns, and that's directly related to the investment that's made, how walkable it is, um, you know, a place where people enjoy spending time, and those tend to rebound faster after downturns. And we actually did a study in, in Denver, looking at the various neighborhoods after COVID, and how they rebounded, and there's definitely, it was like a twenty percent, um, jump in retail sales, tax revenues, um, comparing neighborhoods that were much more walkable that had the investment versus those that had not. So there is definitely a, um, discernible impact from not making an investment.
I think to what Councilmember Riker was saying before, is I think our current cases, that's kind of not necessarily true, because we are kind of in a current ad hoc investment. We haven't really done a lot of investment downtown too much, but we've seen a lot of private investment.
Right.
And so, I mean, to say, that's why I was really wanting to see a number here, like, okay, if we keep doing what we're doing, are, are we supposed to see, you know, a hundred-thousand square feet of development, plus, you know, what's that, that whole movement there? Because this is, I mean, the goal is to say you should invest in this because it's how you're making, but if we continue as is right now, we still will have economic development downtown. I understand the risk of falling behind.
Not, not doing the investment. So you are in a, I mean, admittedly, this is a great downtown, you're in a good situation. We did look at property, um, tax revenue over the last five, you know, since there, since, since the COVID, since the recession, and, um, downtown does track with the city overall, but, um, I think that it's because it's a, it's a great city. The challenge is partially the fact that, um, if you, you see all these other neighborhoods like South Denver, Englewood, whatever, everybody's, they're all investing in their downtown areas, they're making them Targets, Magnus, whatever, people are coming to spend time and spend money. And so if you don't make that investment and sort of keep up, so that, that's another piece of it, if you don't make that investment to keep up, there's also the danger that you, you know, you start falling behind, just because it's, I mean, we live in a competitive, you know, society.
Oh, I, you know, I understand that, I'm just saying that we haven't been doing that, and we've been seeing the investment the last ten years. If you come back ten years ago, downtown was.
Yeah.
And I think, when you, hang on, when you look at the difference to the next one, I mean, this is basically saying there's a zero economic impact to the city if we don't do anything, which is also a kind of a false conclusion with that, too.
I think that's a good note for the draft.
Yeah.
This, this is a draft, we might be able to put some more context on that.
Right.
I think the, the, our current stat, I think one of the, one of the big questions is, is our, is the current growth that has happened in downtown Littleton a reflection of policy decisions? Because is, you know, I, I think one of the things that's happened over the past fifteen years is increased density of housing around downtown, and I, is that a direct relation, is that directly related to the new ULUC, or did that happen before the ULUC? And so for, for me, it's, it's not, it's whether policy is important to the growth. This investment policy is the one that's on the table, but there are other policies as well that might impact growth. That's, I think is important for our conversation.
I'd likely probably even disagree with me, but I think the density happened because there wasn't a ULUC, and the code was so old, and there was a lot of scrapes and putting up apartments. And then the ULUC got in there and then kind of looked at various neighborhoods and tried to be a little bit more conscious about what went in where to maintain the character, and that's where the policy came in.
Yeah, so, so the question, I mean, did the ULUC, or, or did the historic overlay? That could be another policy that may have impacted growth.
Historic overlay is just mainly, it's focused at its main street, now Alamo. I mean, that's all that was there. The rest was, um, because of lack of zoning and lack of looking at what we wanted the downtown, the surrounding area to look like. And now that those neighborhoods have, um, you know, certain parameters that they, that were.
So you're suggesting policy slowed growth?
Policy, I wouldn't say slow growth. I think was very, uh, conscious about what they wanted the downtown area to look like in the various different areas, as opposed to let it be haphazard, which, in my opinion, was a lot of just scrape and throw up, what you could throw up and put as much density into as small areas you could.
That's a wonderful conversation.
Thank you. We're kind of getting off topic. Let's continue with the presentation.
Okay, and then we can discuss more later. But yeah, very good point. So the medium investment scenario, again, that's Main Street, is 36.5 million investment in Main Street, and a lot of streetscape and placemaking improvements. The assumption here is that underutilized and vacant parcels along Main Street in Prince and Nevada, there's a few lots here and there that we made some assumption about some redevelopment. The RTD station area parking lot would be redeveloped under this particular scenario. And so this scenario adds about 18% to Littleton's GDP, current estimate of GDP. It leverages about 200 million of new private investment compared to the 36 million of public, so that's a six to one ratio. The economic and fiscal impact is estimated at about 905 million over 30 years. It's divided up into one time, which is primarily construction, and then your ongoing, which is estimated at 665 million, and that results in 1,200 jobs, one time being construction mostly, and then ongoing permanent jobs is 220 jobs as an estimate. And this is just an example of how we calculate it and divide it up in terms of one time and ongoing. So the maximum investment scenario, and this is, you know, it's 93.5 million. It assumes all of these improvements along Main, Alamo, Prince, and Nevada streets. It was the big capital projects, and that project downtown plan, which is what we picked up, it, the assumption is that we would spur private investment in underutilized and vacant parcels. It assumes the RTD station area parking redevelopment and all that redevelopment along, around the periphery of the downtown area. The assumption here is that it would add about 89% to Littleton's GDP again over 30 years, and, you know, that's a big number. It leverages about 980 million of new private investment compared to that public investment of 93 million, which is a 10 to 1 ratio. The economic and fiscal impact over 30 years is estimated at 4.4 billion with 1.1 billion one time and 3 billion ongoing total jobs, 5,800, with the ongoing new jobs being at about 1,200 overall. So again, just a sample of a spreadsheet that we use. So to summarize overall, we have that ad hoc, you know, no build, no significant investment scenario, basically tracks what's going on with the larger regional economy. I think the challenge here overall is that you have continued cost of maintenance, you have one-off improvements, it's not really cohesive, there's no real significant return on investment. You're really at the mercy of kind of what's happening sort of regionally as well as, you know, in the state as well. And you do risk losing ground to some of your peers and neighborhoods overall, peers and neighbors. Your medium investment is an impact of 905 million within 30 years. You capture new benefits. You see some synergistic effects across downtown, and you add the GDP by about 18%. The maximum investment, it's a very large investment of 90, of over 90 million, but it results in 4.4 billion over 30 years. You leverage multiple aspects of downtown special character, and you really do maximize your potential for private development and ROI. And I think, so key takeaways. Turn it back to Jen.
Great, thank you for your time today. Well, on the next two slides, just kind of summarize what happened in the deck before, and then we'll close up, continue our conversation. So as we mentioned earlier, this analysis really looks at what is likely to happen when you have differing levels of investment downtown. And here we highlight a couple of, you know, motivations for why you might want to invest. One would be to protect and strengthen Littleton's historic character, that, you know, identity that you have downtown, to provide the guardrails that really shape and direct where growth goes, so that it goes to where it is desired. You can also create conditions that are beneficial for your small businesses and generate those long-term resources to maintain infrastructure parks and public spaces over time. I would say just as important is the why, is the how. So how would you invest in Littleton's downtown? What does that look like? And here we've highlighted four major ways that you might do that. One is targeted infrastructure improvements that can maintain what you have while, again, directing growth to where you want it. Second would be ensuring that zoning design standards and planning initiatives create that framework for development that creates consistency with the physical environment that you desire, while also creating the, or reducing the ambiguity for anyone involved in the development process. And then finally, looking at targeted incentives that support keeping downtown local during construction projects and ensure that that small business's character is maintained over time. Thank you again. I know this was very long and a lot of information, but I think very exciting, and we look forward to your questions.
I have another comment. Maybe that question goes to more, to Abigail and Rachel. So additionally, we did this to see how the investment in Project Downtown would be a good return on investment. What I'm seeing, and I, correct me, that what we need to do is not invest in the infrastructure or the streets or make it, you know, the storefronts look nice and all that stuff, but we need to put, we need to do a lot of infill in order to have, get the ROI in order to get the construction, the benefits of construction and the benefit of additional people. So I, I'm, I'm struggling between the two.
So I think what our modeling is showing is that for that to come, it's generally that public investment first. That's what really spurs that private investment, so the infill, those other things generally follow. So with the case studies that we show, like Rhino, for example, the Brighton Boulevard, that $30 million initial investment on the streetscape improvements, that generated some additional public improvements, so about 50 million in public improvements, followed by all of the, I can't remember the figure off the top of my head, but the private investment that followed. So generally, the theme is that public investment really drives that private investment. And that's really what we found through the case studies and through the research that was done for the analysis.
It's the exact opposite of what you said. If you invest in the infrastructure, the streetscapes and things like that, then private development will come, and that's the ROI there.
So we have, so in a kind of a strange way of saying it, if we invest in downtown in order for it to make it worthwhile, we have to have all these high rises, give up our RTD lot, hopefully get this vacant property. I mean, to me, it's.
Four or five stories is considered a high rise.
In downtown. It seems to me.
Not in downtown either, it's on the periphery.
But it seems to me personally, I think that's a little bit of a pack with the devil. And in order, I mean, I think we should upgrade our downtown. It needs it desperately, and we just don't want it to deteriorate. But in order to get the ROI that we might be expecting, it's all these other things that we have to have in order to do that. Do we, we have to have these multifamily units? We have to give up our parking lot, all the sort of jolts.
Kind of a symbiotic relationship, if you think about it, right? So we want to preserve our downtown. That's, that's the goal. That's the character that everyone associates with Littleton, that historic element, everything that we love about downtown. We know in order to preserve that, we have to reinvest in infrastructure upgrades, some placemaking, right, to stay with the times, to remain competitive with our neighbors and with other regions that are actively growing in the state. That's naturally going to bring in interest from investors and developers because they want to be part of that success. But what is possible is to have it both ways, retaining the character, not adding high rises that dwarf Main Street and Alamo and shadow it, but to enhance it and to provide that vibrancy. Because when you start trailing off on your activation numbers, right, when people stop coming to downtown because they're afraid to trip on the sidewalks or the sidewalks are too narrow or there aren't any trees anymore, or, you know, name the issue, right? When that activation falls off, then that's really when things start to die. Then your sales tax goes down, and the ability for the city to reinvest in the area goes down. So it's that symbiotic relationship that we want to generate enough continued interest from the private community that they can carry their weight for the, some of the costs to help us maintain it, not only downtown, but maintain other areas in the city. But we have the tools also to be able to measure that growth and to be strategic about where we allow them to go, so that it's not that high-rise that's dwarfing Main Street or to Alamo, that it's strategic and adds to the character rather than detracts from it.
And this is also meant to just, again, be a point-in-time analysis that presents a potential maximum investment scenario. And so it doesn't mean it's a recommendation or that we're doing that, but it's just a possibility of what could happen if you were to fully invest, what a market response could be to that level of investment.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, like, I think that any one of us or anyone in the community can have a multitude of motivations and reasons that we think that investing in downtown is a good idea. Like, if we just believe that our downtown is a cool place and that it's worth preserving and investing in, I think that's a good enough reason for me. But one of, you know, I think that being able to talk with other folks who operate differently or want to hear more about why we've, like, the why of it, and to be able to justify it to people, I find this information helpful. But I don't think that we need to, like, be focusing on the density piece of it or anything like that, because those are private activities, it's private sector stuff. So I own a property downtown, and I want to sell it to someone because market conditions have improved because the city invested downtown. That's my decision as a private property owner. And I would have to do that within the constraints of whatever zoning we have already set up. So I, I think that the motivations you expressed, Pam, are, I don't know why I'm targeting you specifically, but like, I just, I heard your motivation about like, why we would want to invest in downtown, and I agree. Like, we, or I think I do.
I have no issue with that, and I agree with everything you say. What I'm hearing is that in order to invest in downtown, that the ROI comes from this future private investment, and it looks like this. It looks like four-story buildings and infill on the places that may or may not be appropriate. And I know you're picking and choosing and just saying this is an example, but I just think we invest in downtown and, and we maintain it, and you build it, they will come. And, but they are coming with four-story high-rise buildings.
Whatever they come.
That's what concerns me. That's what's making it all work, the construction costs and the employees and the new residents. That's, that's my concern. And I, and I will stop beating a dead horse.
Building this in the realm of what's allowed in Littleton here, that's what they're doing. They're just saying, yeah, that's, it's not changing anything.
I think.
Andrea first, and then you.
Can I get to talk on the time, Robert?
I know, I do. And Andrea is my favorite councilwoman, so. That's just woman person.
Oh, wow.
Andrea's first, that's just guaranteed.
I only thought might shift the discussion a little bit, but I'm sure that they were privy to all the work you did, which came out of, with like 140-ish million-dollar plan for five streets, and I totally, I think this is super helpful. I totally understand the historic district, that makes sense. I feel like from our public engagement, Littlest Creek kind of became second. And so I don't know how to take that information and those numbers, and this information and these numbers, and not get yelled at by residents, and invest in a way that makes more people want to come.
So the reason why Littlest Creek wasn't necessarily included in this analysis is because that was such a conceptual level understanding of what really is happening in that drainage way. We just didn't feel like it was as ready to be modeled at this level. We had much more detail for the other four major projects, but there's just a lot, there are a lot of unknowns with Littlest Creek, so felt like it was not at that point.
I had the same question. I think it was just the scope of the contract with the minimum, or medium, and I'm like, well, we actually have a higher maximum already, so how is this the maximum when it's not? Councilmember Riker, would you like to speak?
Thank you, thank you. So, so I think Councilwoman Grove brings up a really important kind of just framework for thinking about it, which is what do we want downtown Littleton to look like in 30 years? And I think about the past 20 years that I've lived in the area, where downtown Littleton went from a very sleepy, not particularly activated thing to approaching, you know, more economically vital, but also a kind of arts and entertainment district where people want to go and be. And I, and despite some of my concerns about how that spread east, I think, you know, Littleton Boulevard is becoming more of an arts and entertainment district, and I kind of like that. And it's, part of that is density. I think it's a, I think downtown Littleton is a better amenity for people who live in Littleton because of the density around it. And I think the housing supports that arts and entertainment district. And so the one place I disagree with Councilman Grove is the idea that that's a deal with the devil. Because I think the density actually supports the amenities that make it nice to visit. And, and, and so I'm okay with that. In fact, I'm, I'm excited about that. I think that will add to the value of, and the character of Littleton. And I think it's important to have this conversation. What is the, what are we preserving when we say preserving the character? You know, for me, a lot of it's preserving the historic buildings that are along Littleton Boulevard and along Alamo, and making sure that they, you know, they are maintained and their, their, you know, visual identity as historic buildings is maintained. But I don't think the character rests on whether we have three or four or five-story buildings on the periphery of downtown or along Santa Fe. And that's just maybe a difference in vision, which is really what we're supposed to have here, we're supposed to bring to the table. So I appreciate Councilwoman Grove kind of bringing up this, that vision, that vision feeling a good deal with the devil to her, where to me, it feels like that's exciting because I think it is, it indicates a more, you know, we're on this path of increased vitality, and I mean vitality in both economic and, you know, a good place to walk through and Pokemon Go, driving mega park, which I really, really think we need to embrace a little bit better, but that's a different conversation. I just, I, I, I think, I think we, we are, this vision of having Littleton, downtown Littleton become more of an arts and entertainment district, or more, there are more restaurants, and there are more people, and there are more distilleries, and more art performances, and more art exhibits, that's good in my mind. And I think that's an important part of the conversation, so I appreciate you bringing it up.
What I think I hear, and I think I agree with you, is that downtown, the character is not just old two-story buildings on both sides of the street, but downtown is an economic center, because that's what's.
As a place where people want to go to have a good time. And good time can be shopping in a boutique, it can be attending a performance at the town hall at Center, it can be drinking beer, it, it can be playing Pokemon Go, it can be buying your, buying your wedding gown, and, you know, it's, it's, it's a lot of different things. But that's, you know, that's where I want us to go, and I'm, I'm excited about. I do have one question, but I'm gonna ask it later after other people talk.
Movie here, so I'm stepping in. So one of the things I'm hearing is that as we're thinking of this, we're going to be asked to make decisions around how much money we're investing, if we're, if we are taking on debt to do that, how we are coming up with the funds. And what we're hearing is different models that help us make the decision of how much to invest, correct? And so in, as we're listening to these models, those are just ideas, but if we invest, are we asking, do all of these things have to come to fruition for it to make financial sense? So that's, you know, what I'm thinking about as we're being asked to invest. We don't always know what it's going to look like. These are just ideas, and we're trusting that it's going to make enough money to pay for itself and to benefit the community. But it's not if this hotel doesn't come to fruition, or this land doesn't happen, or if this doesn't, does that crash our financial model that we're investing in? Because if we, if we don't want to build four-story buildings, is that going to make it to where our financial?
We're not building buildings. Four-story buildings are already allowed.
Yes, yeah, yeah. I'm just saying, like, that's, this is an idea, but it's just about to help us make a wise financial decision, right?
I'm interested in the answer to your question.
What's the, what's the weak part of the model? Is that what you're?
Yeah, like, is it dependent on, is the model dependent on X, Y, and Z happening? And if X doesn't happen, then the whole financial model falls apart. Does that make sense?
That's a great question.
Yeah, well, I want Arlene to have a stab at it, but, you know, if you think about Stapleton, 4,700 acres, city came up with this green book. City came up with this green book, city council, community participation, there was a discussion on what that development would look like. Forty-seven hundred acres. And at the end of the day, it was completely successful, returned taxation back to the city of Denver. But what we envisioned in the beginning was not twelve thousand homes. There was a lot more retail and commercial activity. But, you know, basically you have your assumptions at the day that the bonds are issued and that's what you think is gonna develop, gets financed, but you have the opportunity to pivot. And and, you know, there was a community benefits agreement, delivered all the parks, central parks, all the schools and amenities. But at the day, same, at the end of the day, it's not what was envisioned thirty years ago to the exact unit and the percentage ratios between all of the different development types. But it was a hundred percent successful.
Yeah, I mean, you have a very similar example here with Littleton Village, the same thing, exactly same thing. We had this idea of what it was and it's changed because market conditions change. So.
So there's flexibility.
There's a lot of flexibility, so it's not like it's gonna happen exactly like this. Like, I'm guaranteeing that it won't.
This is very fuzzy.
Yeah, it's very, it's it's very, very fuzzy, but it gives you a place to start. And so, and I think that's important. The other part is that, I mean, I think the reason is still forecast to grow. It's not like we're gonna see a downturn here. So what this also does is you almost have to have this sort of po, sort of belief that, you know, you make an investment, you will see a return. It may not be six to one, may not be ten to one, but you'll see something. And I think that other folks have said here, we still wanna make the investment, it doesn't matter if we have a return here. We wanna see just a better downtown. So you're, I mean, everyone's got different sort of thresholds. It could range anywhere from like zero to, you know, to like infinity. But it's, it's a way to help control, I think, your destiny and the fact that you are gonna continue to grow. You just said that folks are gonna be like beaten down your doors wanting to do four-story buildings. You have the choice of whether or not you want to do that. But so, you know, to some extent, what this does is just provides a range of what your possibilities are. And then it's kind of up to you in terms of what you want to see. But I think pretty much guaranteed, this is a great, you know, this is a great city. And so I think folks will, you make that investment, I think folks will, I think they will be, they will come. And so whatever your return on investment is, it's kind of up to you.
Jim?
Yeah, thank you. I I think it's a really good, good question and I like to always kinda caution us that within, within an investment in downtown or or Main Street, you know, reinforcing the value of Main Street isn't all about dollars and cents. You know, the 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 resources coming for this project are from all of Littleton. And I think we all believe that Main Street is one of the, you know, it is a foundational value for Littleton. But it's really about our community and I I think, you know, invest, reinvesting in that, in the infrastructure, which is our role, as we've talked about tonight, we're not doing buildings, is important nevertheless, but I don't think, I would caution us against having a tight kind of ROI definition for this. You know, we are trying to optimize certainly the the revenues back and how, you know, we can put money into Main Street and then Main Street can continue delivering both financially and for, you know, quality of life for our community. It's it's bigger than than just ROI.
And that's what I think I was trying to name, like, I get the deal with the devil, but it does break this like, or bring this to mind. Like, if we want a thriving downtown, do we have to commit to this vision? And and so that, it sounds like, no. Like, if we wanna thriving downtown, we're investing in downtown and these are the possible ways that that might play out.
We're committing to a vision, we're just saying if you invest in it, it's possible to get economic return to have all this development. We could also just say, hey, we wanna freeze our land use in downtown and not do anything. And then that would end up, we could still put that investment in there, but that wouldn't be a wise decision there.
I I think that's really the, the point that we wanted, that's what, that's the point that we wanted to to bring tonight is we, you know, six months ago, we had had questions about, you know, is there empirical value to, you know, to reinvesting, to starting this reinvestment, you know, project for for downtown? And I think we have an obligation to to do that analysis and understand how it has happened elsewhere and how we can have the industry, you know, the the best knowledge that that we can about, you know, parameters for what that, for what the future can be. So I think that that is a a good place to land, is that there is value in making these kinds of, these kinds of investments. And that, you know, over thirty years, we're we're gonna be considering, you know, what's best for Littleton as we, as we move forward.
Any other, Merrill?
How in the weeds were you on this? So when you're looking at those numbers, are you just comparing overall scope, so like size of project and in return? Or were you looking at individual projects that we're considering and valuing the ROI on individual ones?
Individual.
You know, Adrian was mentioning the four different phases, whether it's Main Street and Prince, so there's other, were you looking at this as like Main Street would get this ROI, this would do that? Or were you looking more comparing the scope of this project to what Parker did or to Castle Rock kinda? I'm saying how low to it were, was the analysis?
It was a little bit of both. So we did look specifically at kind of the main, we we were looking at downtown really as a whole. Because it's not really, it it's, you know, it's a cute little downtown. And so we did look at Main, Alamo, Nevada and Prince specifically, that whole area. And then we also looked at case studies like what happened in Castle Rock, some of them were comparable areas in terms of what happened around it. And then we came up with, we did look at existing conditions from an economic perspective and we came up with a general sort of overall. We used some planning software, which essentially doesn't say, okay, office here, this, that and the other. We kinda set the parameters for the building and then it fills it in for us and it, what it does, which is not really realistic. It says, well, this building can be most mostly office, but a little bit of housing, a little bit of restaurant, a little bit of retail. And so we we kinda massaged those numbers. So it's really kind of a planning. It's really much more of a high-level planning exercise that we wanted to at least start with. But it's to get at least, you know, the idea out there that, you know, you make these investments and then you do have sort of a a private investment return that comes from that.
Kind of like iconic SimCity.
Oh, it's gonna populate here, that's what it does. My next, where I'm headed with it is I'm curious where, what invest, like just if you're looking purely on economic return to these, what areas had the biggest impact? And I say like, is it, did, did you get into that kinda weeds? Was it the beauty of a place?
I don't think they plugged in like, let's do Main Street but not Prince and let's do Prince but not Main. I don't think they did it that way.
Yeah, we didn't really do it that. We we ended up just doing it.
You were mentioning like a walkable area drove economic returns and so like. Yes, that's like characteristics that added more, like, yeah, making it more walkable was one that drove more return on economic side. Or what, whatever it was, I was curious if there were other more specific characteristics that were adding more value.
It was the walkability and it was, you know, all of the improvements that, you know, we've mentioned here. The other thing that we did look at was, were there vacant parcels, were there, you you have some parking lots in the downtown area. They are used for parking, so I'm not saying we're gonna remove them. But we did make some assumptions about, oh, well, some of those have the potential for redevelopment. We also assumed parking would also be added to not take any parking away. So that's kind of how.
Like that ninety-three million would add this much more walkability versus thirty-six million and that's why there would, you would see that.
From a design perspective, I would say your plans already give a lot of direction of what is intended, like what is intended for each street. For example, Main Street improvements in terms of urban design and architecture is is much greater than the other streets, right? There, the improvements there are really just kind of critical improvements versus nuanced beautification aspects that are allocated for Main Street. So not every street needs that level of detail that Main Street is going to get. In fact, it's probably in your best interest not to do that for all of your streets. That makes that Main Street more special. But in terms of getting to the design details, we didn't go as far as that. It's just kind of general, these are sidewalk improvements, lighting improvements, landscaping and tree canopy improvements, kind of our generals, general scale. Does that make sense?
We were relying more on your, your specific plans than we were.
Designing it.
Just, yeah, designing plans. And then the density was just coming on kinda generally in regards to this.
Robert?
It's not as specific as you think, yeah.
Can we go to slide forty-two and make sure I'm reading the zeros correctly, just like literally? If, if, if I'm reading this correctly, do you think that the, the investment of the thirty-six million dollars is gonna generate four-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand dollars of taxes? Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. And then in the, in the immediate, and then they'll, it'll lead to private investment that will bring in thirteen million dollars of taxes in, you know, over that investment period. And then over thirty years, it's gonna bring in, you believe, two-hundred-and-seventy million dollars worth of taxes. No, is that right? Yeah, two-hundred-and-seventy million. So to do the apples-to-apples comparison on that two-hundred-and-seventy, we need to not do the thirty-six million dollars of budget. We need to do the investment and interest costs, right? Which I have no idea how much it is, but it's, I mean, just, because I think the bigger question is kinda what is the right ROI, right? And so one ROI is, does the investment by the city cover, does the return on the investment by the city cover the costs of that investment? And that's, and then there's other kinda ROIs around how many more jobs there are, that how many, how much more re, you know, amenities there are and how much better the physical infrastructure is. I mean, so what, what my quest, question now that you've made sure I'm reading this chart right is, what do you think is the right way to measure ROI for a city's investment? Is it return on their tax revenue? Is it economic activity? Is it investment in infrastructure? Could you kinda, you know, which one is the best or is it the whole package or how? How do I think about these different returns is really what I'm trying to get at.
Another good question. Yeah, and that's kind of what I.
So that quarter is special.
They certainly are.
More questions on our side, you're not good.
This, we just rearranged the whole table. This is a brand-new coalition.
There's several different ways of looking at it. I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, it is a good question. A lot of cities do look at it in terms of, and and Jim, maybe you can help illuminate how, you know, from a fiscal perspective, how you might look at it. So part of it is sort of the taxes generated, because you need that in order to keep, you know, the lights on and operations going and that type of thing. But there's the other part of, you've got more jobs now in the city, you've got, you know, folks that are spending money. It's capturing all of that and that's not always just taxes. It's always, it's, it's related to like new businesses, they transact with each other or new households, they spend money in the city as well. So actually, you'll see in the report, we have divided it up and into economic and fiscal. And you can look at it at both ways, because I think the fiscal is more immediate to the city operations. But then there's the bigger picture, what does, you know, you know, your, your services and goods produced in Littleton? And how does that increase over time? And so we've bundled it together, which I think is the correct way of doing it, but you can, you can look at it differently as well, which is, it's typically done where you bundle them together.
Well, I, I think some of us, and I'm not sure where I land, quite frankly, just that it's an amenity to the city and it makes quality of life better in the city. And that's not actually captured in this. Okay, I'm done with my question.
I mean, I think along with that, it's, not that I think either of these are unrealistic. If we were to invest two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars, we would probably get a, you know, thirty-billion-dollar return on investment, which isn't in reality. It's kinda the same idea, like if you're building a football stadium, well, the more seats I build, if I just build a football stadium for three-hundred-thousand people, it's not gonna get filled. That's why you, you know. And so is the ninety-three, the the media, the high investment option, the the maximum really? I mean, if we invest more, are we not gonna see a return in investment? Where's that inflection point where it is actually a disinvestment? I don't think, I don't think you have the answer to that, because I don't think you were charged with doing that, but that's what.
Good question, because so much of it is dependent on the opportunity for development, right? So is there, is there a place where you max out on the type of investments you make overall? This is why it's important to be strategic on the investments you make, because you don't wanna get to the point where, yeah, you've, you've overdeveloped, right? Or you can't develop anymore.
So this economic impact study is one of the first steps here. You know, whether it's city council decides to move forward, whether it's COP, a geo bond, a tax increment, you have different tools to pull here. But there will be another litmus test and that's with the private investment community. It will be underwritten, just like you get your mortgage underwritten. So there's another test. So it's not like we're deciding today and we're gonna issue these bonds, we're not sure exactly what will be developed. There will be a a deeper analysis and it it's gotta be underwritten by all the potential buyers of the bonds. They wanna put it out on the market, market, they don't think anyone would subscribe to it, so.
Kinda gets like what, next point and we probably get moving on to our next agenda. But to me, this is, I really like seeing this, but almost would have been beneficial to do at the beginning of Project Downtown and say, hey, is it worthwhile to do Project? I know it's kind of a chicken and egg kinda thing, that you don't have what's the investment would be, but to sell this and to figure out, I mean, we've already, I mean, we've already kinda decided on some of these things. So we already made the decision before we have the data here. And so it may have been better to have this ahead of time.
It doesn't always have to be that single decision, right? There's many, the decisions to be made in the years to come in terms of the future phasing. And that pacing is optimal too, because you can tell that growth on people's days. So taking that first step and the, moving on investments, you know, really signals to the market that readiness that Littleton is, is ready for the conversation, is ready for, to invite those partners to the table. Then you can decide how fast. But keeping in mind, little, 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 to start to lose interest from the private sector.
So, I mean, I think Pam put on, you know, what we need to communicate to the public is that we believe, you know, we pay for economic analysis. It suggests that the city will make its money back from the investment. But that is gonna come from more economic activity downtown. And that more economic activity is gonna be more people living down there, more people working down there and more people shopping down there. And that's what we're trying, that's what we're investing in, is to do those things.
It's not just to put money in the city's pocket, but to put money in other people's pockets.
It's to put, but it's, but it is, we're, we are trying to activate the downtown and we think we, I believe that makes it a quality of life. But that's the decision we're asking the voters to support us with when we go up for reelection.
Can I add what, what happens when all of that happens? That's when employers wanna come to your, to your neighborhood and to your downtown. So jobs will come to downtown as well.
Yeah, I think it's, I think the construction company that came in suggests that it really is a great place to work, because there's places to eat and there's places to shop and it is a good place to work.
Well, I was curious, I want you to touch on pilot, are we changing the question? Because I was agreeing with you, we all kind of already agreed we were doing the middle step. Are we now looking at doing more?
At this point, well, that was over thirty years, yes, probably, but not at this point in time. I mean, that's where my question was, how we did that, when we're, the idea is we proved that plan moving forward, kind of even beyond the maximum, actually, so.
And I think it's important, it helped me understand, Councilmember Henderson was saying, this is not a vision. This is a, a way to make sure that we do get return on investment from all the various things.
This is just to reassure council, like, hey, you guys already decided this, you're gonna get your money back, good job, let's go. Why are we spending an hour and a half talking on this? Is what staff is thinking.
This is a great tool that we know that we have in our toolbox in the future when we're looking at these types of investments. And something that we should consider as a companion when we're developing conceptual plans, so we we can have that conversation at the same time.
And downtown is not currently overdeveloped. There is place for more development there. And that's important too.
Well, thank you so much for coming in and sharing this. Very helpful.
Thank you, thanks a lot.
Thank you all. So council, let's take a four-minute break. We'll come back at eight o'clock and we'll switch up. Well, eight o'clock, we started at eight o'clock, seriously.
Man, you didn't get any cans?
All right.
We paid for it, but they stated the selection. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, just curious how that brought this follow-up after, yeah. Well, do you have a question about it? Because, yeah, it was a consultant that we paid for to come in.
But the RFP process, we really don't have.
But so the council says, yeah, we'd like to see this, and then. All right, next item of business, an update on the project management information system.
Thanks, Mayor. So I just handed out during the break, just a handout that we're going to use a lot with, I want to start with council, but also with our staff and with our community. Just that we've been talking about how all the planning we've been doing, all the projects have been leading up to a lot of work that the community is going to see in, in twenty-twenty-six. And this, this kind of lays out some of those, those biggest projects that will be part of, that will comprise council's work plan for twenty-twenty-six. And we'll read through them, but you'll, if you just look through, there's a lot of big stuff happening. As we've been building up to this work, we have been, you've heard us talk about scaling the organization, whether it's been procurement or community engagements. Another big aspect of how we work is, is, is project management. And Adrianne's been with the city now for a few years and has been, I think, you know, demonstrating project management in larger settings and has been kind of informally built, bringing our staff along in terms of project management practices. And over the last year, she's, you know, been grown into her new role as Director of, of major projects. That role is a lot of what you see in terms of the projects themselves. But a lot of her time right now is spent with our team building these systems around, you know, sharing, sharing information and, you know, scoping projects correctly. And I'm going to stop because you'll hear about it now. Excited about this, this, this work. This is another kind of key piece as we grow into our ability to manage more work for the community, can deliver on the work that you've given us. And so with that, that's what this is about. You'll, you'll see some system-facing new tools. We also want, we also do want to share a little bit about the internal scaling that we're doing to give our, our staff the tools that they need to deliver projects successfully. So Adrianne.
Good evening again, Mayor, members of, members of council. Adrian Burton, Director of Major Projects. One layer over here now. But tonight, I'm introducing our, our new project management information system, or PMIS. This is a major step forward for us in terms of strengthening project governance, transparency and accountability citywide. The system will support the way Littleton delivers projects as we enter upcoming cycles of capital investment. And so for our agenda, I'll quickly go over our current state versus future state, the starting point, how we got to where we are, governance and collaboration, the, the change management process and the importance of how we're being intentional with the rollout, the, the pilot process we're going through right now and the training that we're developing, where we're headed and some of the deliverables that you'll see as a result of this, and then our final roadmap to launch, and then some closing statements for you. So what is a PMIS? A PMIS is more than a tracker. It's a, it's an integrated digital platform that's for planning, budgeting, scheduling and monitoring projects. It standardizes workflows, tools and templates. So every project, large or small, follows the same level of rigor. This becomes a core performance management tool that supports decision-making at the leadership level. And it also establishes consistent, reliable governance as Littleton prepares for major capital initiatives. So why this matters now? We're facing rising project volumes, major capital needs and increasingly complex funding requirements. Council has emphasized transparency and accountability. And this system directly addresses that by giving you consistent reporting and early warnings for risks. The PMIS also sets expectations for disciplined project management as we approach future financing cycles. So our current state today, our project information lives in siloed spreadsheets. A lot of project management's done via emails and documents. I know you've heard that a little bit in the past. That makes it really difficult to, to provide consistent reporting, pull together a narrative quickly, to go back in and really understand the historical track of the project. Risk tracking is often limited and often reactive. And the, the PMIS really shifts us to a future state with consistent intake, standardized documentation and real-time dashboard that, that leadership can rely on. So the future state, we're moving away from the siloed spreadsheets. Every project will have the, the same set of templates, basically, with, with access across the board. The in, the input process will create a single source of truth that there's no longer sources coming from multiple places in the organization. Rather than having inconsistent project tools that are being developed in, in various departments, we'll have standardized templates. We will be able to identify early risks in our projects because we'll have built-in performance indicators such as cost performance index and schedule performance index. Again, with the reactive reporting, we'll have proactive reporting that will be happening on, depending on the milestone we want to set, if it's bi-weekly, if it's monthly, we'll have more capabilities there. We are establishing more routine project governance standards. And so projects are going through an intake process where all of that initial project information is being reviewed upfront. So every project is going through a consistent project initiation process. Again, we don't necessarily have great depth of real-time dashboards available to the community. And so the, one of the outputs that we're really excited about is creating these community-based, integrated, public-facing dashboards that you'll have real-time information about planning, design, construction projects with geo-reference, spatial ref, location information. And so you can see what's happening in your neighborhood, what's happening across the city, and, and get narrative information about what's going on. So what is a project? Project is a temporary endeavor, and I apologize, it seems like all of my text got goofed up in the formatting in here, so it's a little difficult to read. But a, a project is a temporary endeavor. It's, it usually has a single, unique deliverable. So the difference between a project and routine operations, those are happening on a day-to-day basis. That's the keeping the lights on, the, in the routine service delivery. The distinction is the projects are the things that are going into the PMIS. Routine operations aren't necessarily going to be tracked as a project would be tracked within the PMIS. We will be developing other tools, so we will be able to better understand in terms of an annual cycle where we are on our routine operations. And so like street operations, things like that. That system will be coming, but our first focus is the, the project side. Oh, yeah.
Some of these are on either side of that category?
Most of the projects on that list are one-time projects. There might be a few things that could be going into ongoing. But most of those are one-time.
Capital, I think it's one high level, I think capital projects are the main, main thing that will be managed. There will be some others, like the, like the sub-area plan will be part of that. Some of our ma- major planning projects and the capital projects. An example of something that wouldn't be on this list would be the, the operating agreement with, with South Suburban Parks and Recreation. You know, at this point, based on, well, yeah, that's, that's an example. The libraries, the library strategic plan is, yeah, because that means kind of the, the public engagement kind of threshold, so.
Really, we're focused in this first kind of rollout on public-facing projects. So our capital projects, planning projects, anything that has that type of public interaction or there's opportunity for engagement, that's what we're focused on in this first phase. Where there's potential for refinement, development, we'll be looking at that as we continue to develop this, this process. The, the nice thing about the system that we've implemented is there's a lot of flexibility. So the why, we've kind of touched on that. Again, siloed, inconsistent reporting, really working towards a system that's much more transparent. If we, with the amount of scaling up in the organization that we're doing, we need better systems that help us track all of the work that we're doing from an organizational readiness standpoint, so we can be ready to deliver on that, to be consistent in how we do that, and to just build that accountability with the public. Who, so I've been working with some partners in our IT group. We have developed an internal working group with our, with representation from a variety of different departments. But they've had input since the, the, the tool was about seventy percent built. And so coming in to really see what we were doing and helping us refine along the way. And then the what is this centralized system. And so we originally have had, we've had Smartsheet as our, as our project management tool. But it's been a, a less robust platform. And so a year ago, we understood the capabilities that Smartsheet can present to our organization. And so we upgraded to a different tier. And with that introduced an automation feature. And so that's called Control Center. I won't dive too much into the details. But with that feature, what we're able to do is, is create projects that create links and automate all of that without having one person having to manually develop that every time we create a project. And when we have a work plan that has four, over four hundred items on it, that gets really time-consuming. And so going to a system that has that automation feature is a real time saver for us. And within that, that project that you create with Control Center, there are a variety of different sheets that are built on project management standards. And so the things that really, the tools that every project manager should have, managing really anything from a communications event plan all the way to a major capital project. And so the system, again, that we've introduced is something that's very flexible and has a lot of room to meet the needs of all the departments in the organization for a minimal cost. A lot of municipalities in this region have implemented systems that cost millions of dollars that don't necessarily have that capability or the flexibility. So we're starting with something that's very scalable in our organization that, again, can kind of cross all these departmental needs, which is pretty cool and hard to do. So the project team, I touched on that a bit. Our technical advisory committee, that's that group that's comprised of representatives from a variety of different departments, the, or the tech. They've been extremely helpful. They're the ones that are reviewing the system. They're coming up with training materials. They're asking the tough questions. They're the project managers that are going to be using this system. And so they're really getting in and questioning, you know, why is it built this way? What are we going to do? How are we going to use the system? And the other piece that is, is really integral to all of this is the project governance committee. And this is comprised of key leaders in the organization that will be involved in that initiation process and will be reviewing project charters or that project initiation piece prior to a project kicking off. They also will be evaluating major projects during their lifecycle. And if projects are at risk, talking about those with departments. But basically, it's putting all the key people in the room at the same time rather than having multiple siloed conversations over the duration of the project as it can often happen. So from a change management standpoint, this is a, a big cultural shift in the organization. It can often, these types of things, I think, software implementations, seventy percent of them fail. So not great numbers there. So you have to be really intentional about how you roll those out. We don't want this to be viewed as it's one more thing I got to do. This is really integral to the overall project delivery system. So it's got to be a cultural shift in how we approach project management, how we deliver our projects. So we want to bake it into everything that we do. So we've, we've designed about a ten-month rollout process. And that started with just introducing the system, working with our technical advisory committee, and starting a pilot project program. So we have about eight, about eight different project managers, I'm including myself in that. And we're, we're going through the system when we're getting in there and we're starting to use it together and, and really compiling our, our usability questions, understanding what's working, what's not, where can we refine? And then what training materials are needed to support the rest of the organization? And then we'll start to go to the next tier of project managers. And then we hope to go to a full rollout in the. And then, we hope to go to a full rollout in the, in Q2 of 2026, potentially. But, trust, oh, yes, yeah.
Does the consultant, is the consultant with you the whole way or no? No, they just like show you how to use it and then they're done?
So, the consultant was with us, we brought them on to help to build the system. So, we defined the requirements, and we met with them on a weekly basis. We actually started in January of 2025, and then I stepped into the interim finance director role. We put it on hold for about five months, and then I picked it back up in May. And from May to August, we finished the requirements building, and they, they basically built out the system. And then, we brought in the TAC and started to kind of finalize everything. And so, the system itself is, is pretty much ready, but we still have a lot of things on our side to do. So, the consultant, they, they've delivered what we scoped them for, and so now it's on us to do the rest, yeah. So, with the pilot projects, we, we identified a mix of planning, design, and construction projects. So, we have representation from a variety of different project managers with a variety of project management experience. And so, I'm under, I can start to understand where everybody is in this group in terms of project management knowledge, project management, just verbiage, and we can start to come to develop some common language around some things. This team has been fantastic. They, they're committing extra time. I have office hours every Monday where we get together, they compile their questions, we get together and we talk about, you know, what are, what are we doing? What, what are you seeing? What, what problems can I help you navigate? And we, we just put our heads together and we work through those things. And my colleagues in IT are helping support that as well. And so, that's been a really great, just hands-on experience because we're doing it collectively and nothing, one of those failure points sometimes with these types of rollouts is something's just given to you and you don't get that opportunity to provide that feedback. And so, this group is really going to be pretty critical in this process because they're, they are going to be that first line of, this is what the rest of the organization needs before we're ready to move to the next steps. So, again, one of the final deliverables that we're working towards is a public-facing dashboard, and this is going to be an Esri-based platform. A lot of cities have implemented these. Seattle has a really great dashboard, if you want to check it out, but that's kind of an example of something that you might see. But, the Smartsheet, our PMIS, will be that single source of truth. So, project managers aren't going to multiple platforms, they're not emailing as, you know, can you send a project update? Everybody will go to the central repository for all of that information. And then, all of those narrative updates will then feed into this public-facing dashboard. And that way, there's not room for error, there's not duplication of information, there's, anytime you have to input things in multiple places, it creates a lot of challenges and just adds a lot of extra time. So, this is an example of what that dashboard might look like. This is just a preliminary draft. This is Project Downtown, you might have heard of it. But, there's a map in the center, it shows the location of the project. Over on the left-hand column, you can see different project types, project stage, funding source that we can, we have a lot of different capabilities we can set up, so definitely open to feedback for how we want to organize this. But, for the project itself, we would have a narrative description, latest update, where the project is, and just some very high-level information. We can include graphics, so any, if a project's in construction, we could include a couple recent photographs of what's going on. If project's in design, you could have a couple concept images if you have something. But, no matter what, the output is only as good as the input. And so, we have to make sure that we're being consistent with our updates and getting our information in, reviewing, and going through the process that we're putting in place. Oh, yeah.
So, I run my office as like a public-facing dashboard. And one of the things I fought against when we were building it was having it just sort of auto-update with just raw data.
Yeah.
Because the data is important, but it doesn't like tell the whole story. And so, just as an example, you know, we see some of these like red dots up here, I think it's divided into a column having to do with budget and a column having to do with timeline, is that right? And so, if I'm a member of the public, I'm like, whoa, Mineral, I think it's Mineral East Mobility is both over-budget and behind-schedule.
That doesn't mean anything, this is just.
Yes, for members of the public, this is an example.
Yeah.
But, so, so my question here is two-fold, or actually three-fold. Will this be auto-updating or does this require manual update?
This will require a level of manual updating because we want to make sure, just from a usability standpoint and communication standpoint as well, that the language that's going in, that it's easily digestible, that it's going through a couple levels of review from the project manager, you know, the project manager, they're living this day-to-day. They're thinking about it in terms of like A to B and what's the quickest way to just get this message out there. But, how do we need to maybe refine some of these things for the, the public to really just get the message very clearly? And so, that's going to take a little bit of a manual process. And also, just pull it, because of the sophistication between several layers of dashboards that we have and all of the projects across the system, there is going to have to be that just level of QAQC that we will do to go through and pull that. Plus, it gives us that ability to just go through on a monthly basis and ensure that everything's good before it goes, goes live.
Is the idea then that it would be updated roughly, monthly?
Most likely. We might have some different cadences depending on department, depending on project need, and so, those have not been defined yet.
Okay. Who's going to be sort of the top-line administrator for this? Is that you?
Currently.
Because these things can, just for what it's worth, they take more work, I think, than it can appear at the outset to just keep it updated.
Did you just say suck the life out of it?
No.
Just want to make sure.
I, I, I just want to make sure that like we, that you have the capacity. I'm not, I have all the faith in the world, Anya, but like, these, it's a real commitment.
Yes. And I do have some colleagues in IT that are also helping support. And so, yes, I think the capacity issue is a real challenge, but, you know, we do, we are committed to ensuring that this happens. All of this work has, there's been such a lead-up to getting this done. I think the rollout and the phasing of the projects and ensuring that the cadence and how much information we get, it might take some time to fully build out the entire system because of that.
Yeah. Okay. And then, sorry, I'm asking a lot of questions, but.
This is great.
So, I, the, right below the project description, there's a project stage, and then there's the latest update section. I'm imagining this is where we would be carefully explaining any sort of over-budget issues or behind-timeline issues, is that, okay? Is that going to get passed? Because, you know, we've had this larger conversation surrounding communication with the public and how we're, how we're presenting that information. Are we going to work with our communications team?
Yes.
To build that?
Yes. And they are on our technical advisory committee, they've been a big part of this.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Sorry for all my questions.
No, those are fantastic. It's nice to know that you.
I think this is fabulous, and I think the transparency is wonderful. Is there a way to evaluate without a whole lot of work? I mean, is it built in the system? How many people come and visit the site? Here, you're spending a lot of time and effort, and three people come a year.
Yeah.
I, I'm just saying, is it built into the system?
Yeah, there is a way to monitor who's coming to visit the webpage itself. I mean, from a, from an organizational readiness standpoint, no matter what, we know we need the project managers' standards in place. So, that's one thing. And I can check to see if people are getting in there, opening their sheets and doing their updates. But, yes, we, we can see what, what's resonating with the public, maybe where, is it too complex? Do we need to simplify things? And so, that is a big part of how we're rolling this out, too, is that last phase is just that continuous improvement, ensuring that we're being open and evaluating and refining as we hear feedback to make sure we're meeting the needs ultimately of who we're trying to benefit, and that's the public.
I'll tell you, I'm going to be one of the biggest users, and I hope that you are, because this is, right now, you know, I'm trying to think of some tangible differences. Right now, when, when I have, when I have requests for a project update, I'm emailing the, you know, the department director or the project manager, they have to kind of compose and update. Where with this, that kind of one, one source of truth kind of system will be very helpful because I'll be looking at the same information that the directors are looking at, the council members will be looking at, and hopefully, the public will, too.
I was just going to ask, will there be capability, kind of like the South Suburban project system, that if you like live right next to a project and you want an email or notification every time it's updated, that you could?
Yes, so, there's another system that you're going to hear more about through communications, but it goes hand-in-hand with the PMIS for a lot of our major projects, but it, it's called Engagement HQ, and I don't want to steal communications thunder on it, but it, it's going to offer some of that. And so, we are building this, these really, really robust tools just to help enhance all of those capabilities.
More on people, yeah, check, be curious.
Yeah.
I have a steal question from Councilman Peters. Will this interact with or replace the development activity list? Since I assume a lot of those things are technically projects, they're all projects on there, all one-time things.
These are all, oh, sorry.
They're all bigger, I know they're different types of projects, but.
Yeah, so this will not replace the DALL. The DALL is going through its own refinement and enhancements at some point. That will still stay separate. This is only city-led projects.
So, what are the hopes and expectations for how we will be engaging in this? Are we going to be engaging this when it becomes a public-facing website? Or is there going to be other points of engagement for us in this?
We, when we get to the level of our, our pilot program is going successfully, we'll start creating draft reports, and that's where we would like to really get those in front of city council and start getting feedback about, yeah, this is working, or we need some more information here, and that's where we could start making some tweaks on some things.
Is there going to be a dashboard that we're going to be looking at, or are you going to be sending us?
We, we can definitely create a city council-specific dashboard. We're going to have project-level dashboards, department-level dashboards, a city-wide dashboard. We, outside of those things, can create.
Well, I don't, no, I'm not asking for a city council-specific one. I mean, it feels like the citywide may be the appropriate place for us to engage. That, just, I'm both interested in the work and I'm curious about how you, it's very clear how this works with capital projects, how this works with planning projects and design projects. I'm just interested in seeing how you navigate those differences. And so, I'm excited about engaging, and I just want to know how I'm supposed to do that in a way that's not annoying.
Jim told me not to go too far into the weeds, but I'm more than happy anytime to.
No, I appreciate that, too. It is late on a Tuesday, I'm not asking for the weeds.
I think the website will be, I mean, you really are key consumers of this, of this information. So, I think once we have the dashboard on the website, you know, we'll look for your feedback on how that looks and feels. You're having more conversations than most with constituents and stakeholders about status of projects.
So, this next slide really shows that 10-plus month phased rollout. We are currently getting near the end of Phase Two, where we're developing some department training materials, we're doing that guided rollout with our, our pilot team, and then starting to build out that plan for the next round of, of project, project managers that we're going to bring in. Phase Three is when we'll start thinking about full adoption and how we'll be weaving that into everybody's workload with capacity. And then, the goal right now is, is to go live in Q2 of 2026, but that's all dependent upon capacity and how, how well-training and rollout is going.
Are you running into, as you're, you know, going through the change management piece of this, are you running into resistance or what, like, are there sort of key hangups?
Yes. So, I'm three and a half years in, and I have been talking about project management standards since I got here. And so, I think they've been wearing people down slowly over the years. So, you know, everybody has a preferred system of doing things, and when we're reacting in a very reactive way and everybody has a huge workload and there's a lot going on, change always feels scary. And when you're not sure what these systems mean and you don't necessarily have that project management training, or you haven't come from an organization that has those systematized approaches to how to deliver those things, it can feel really overwhelming. And even breaking it down into bite-sized pieces can still feel really overwhelming. So, back to that cultural shift thing, that is real. And yes, I think at first, there, there was a lot of fear around this, especially around those cost-performance indicators, schedule-performance indicators. What does that mean to me as a project manager? I mean, some of these things are just outside of our control, whether contractors, what, there are lots of things, but no matter what, we have to be tracking these things and we need to understand them from a historical perspective, so we're better planning for future projects. So, I think it's bringing a lot of awareness and education to why we need these tools, how they can really benefit you, and just having, listening, and a lot of conversation. And the TAC has been really, really helpful because where I have a talking point, they're, they might come back and say, that's not helpful to me, how you're saying that. What I really need to hear is this. And so, they've helped me refine my communication because I don't know how people function without project plans and raid logs and all the things to deliver a large project. So, I think it's impressive at times when people can live in, in that world without that. But, I think, again, we're building this culture together, which is what's going to make this successful.
Awesome. And I'm, I have a lot of questions, and I'm not going to apologize for them, actually. One of my questions that I had written down before was, what is a raid log? And I saw that it's connected to improved risk management.
Yeah.
I was curious about that.
So, raid log tracks your risks, actions, issues, and decisions throughout the project. And so, one thing that's really helpful for, for any project, really, is upfront, you're thinking about any risks that you might encounter. For example, for Project Downtown, the trees are going to be cut down before this project kicks off. That's a pretty big risk for how I'm going to kick off communication with the public. And so, what is my mitigation strategy for how I'm going to effectively handle that or work with the community to educate, to develop a relationship in spite of this major change that has occurred? So, there's the standard scope, schedule, budget, quality, things that you're always tracking from the start of a project, and developing some mitigation strategies upfront about how you navigate those things if they present. And so, if they do, you already have a plan kind of in place or something that you can at least refine, but you're showing your leadership, you're being proactive, you've already got some type of solution that you're, you're thinking about, and we're just better prepared, and we have a more timely response in how we can approach those risks.
Cool, thank you.
If you want to hang out with somebody who does really well without project plans, I'm your man.
She's going to avoid you in the hall.
I am not a structured person.
I respect that.
I'm not sure you, you need to, but.
Well, we've touched on some of these constraints, you know, capacity, adoption, consistency across diverse departments, timeline requirements, data governance and security, consistency across departments with the piloting process. Our communications team is actually already, they've dug deep into piloting a lot of their events already with this tool. So, their feedback has been really cool, but it's so great to just see them using this system, and a system that was really originally designed to support capital projects and see how they're adapting and using this. It's, it's been really great, again, because we're thinking about it globally for the city and how it can be used. But, success, at the end of the day, all capital projects will be tracked with these standardized performance metrics. We have these on-demand dashboards, everybody has access to this information. We are earlier, we are quicker at identifying risks and we're planning for these things. We have stronger organizational readiness in delivering these major capital projects and programs, increased accountability and transparency in the community, better efficiency and higher performance across departments, and then improved cross-departmental collaboration. In organizations I've been with before, one of the nicest features about a PMIS is just understanding what everybody else is working on internally. And so, when you're new to an organization, you can get in. And so when you're new to an organization, you can get in there and see what everybody's doing. And so you can learn from those other project managers, you, um, know what's happening at, near your projects. But there's a lot, there's just better awareness and, again, that stronger cross-departmental collaboration. And then just better project governance. Honestly, um, it's more than a tool. It's increasing, enhancing our governance, creating greater accountability, and it's, and really establishing true transparency with all our projects.
Quote that you wrote?
It's a quote, it's a quote from Adrian Burn. With this system, Littleton, it's not just managing projects, we're building a lasting culture of clarity, confidence, and public trust.
I love it.
Adrian twenty-five.
Adrian Burn.
I will print the T-shirts. Questions, comments, council?
Sorry for, I don't know what happens to the TAC.
Yeah, clearly. You don't like that talent. So.
Can you do this in my life?
So my one question, I mean, you guys, when I started at the council, the city was about halfway through the implementation of Workday, which I think is, is challenging for any organization. My wife quit an organization because of the Workday. So, um, you know, what are the lessons learned from that for this? So, um, and in many ways, Workday, I think, was also trying to improve clarity and transparency and.
Yeah.
And how will it work with Workday?
Yeah, so Smartsheet is actually, they're working towards integrations with Workday. Um, it's definitely on their list. They hear about it a lot. Um, I'm actually presenting at a Smartsheet conference in, in January to about eight hundred people in the public sector that are using this tool as a PMIS. And so, um, I, that's going to be an opportunity for me to talk about what we're doing and how we're doing it. But then hear from them, what are their lessons learned? And what went well, what didn't go well? And, and that's what, how I've really tried to approach this entire process. I've, I've reached out to a lot of our peers in the region to understand, again, where were the missteps? What was successful? How, how can we do this successfully? Because a seventy percent failure rate for any types of software changes like this, that's, that's staggering. Um, but thirty percent of them succeed, so.
You like an answer too, just from my standpoint, you know, we pay a lot of attention, a lot of attention to change management with this project more than we have, based on learnings that we have from Workday. Um, I think we also, um, are able to do, just because the work is more conducive to piloting the system instead of a go-live with both an HR and a finance system, you know, we're able to, to scale it, you know, uh, which is, is good. So those are all, you know, and just I think Adrian's leadership and one-on-one work with project managers uh, will go a, a long way toward, um, you know, it, toward more acceptance and just products, uh, quality when, when we're done. Um, it is, it is new, and it is more of the change that's, that's, that's happening. You know, we've, we've talked about these, these systems and where we are sequencing them. Um, but given the work that we have and given, you know, workload that this council has set, um, we need to mature our, our project management systems so that, you know, and I, I do want to say, we have really good project managers. But the, the big change that's, that sticks in my mind is going from where we might have a handful of Public Works project managers working on their individual projects, uh, without as much easy coordination with finance and, and procurement, communications, all of those systems, and city manager's office. Now all those folks will be in the same room from project conception, uh, and, and tracking and managing together. So that when you look at big projects on this list, we're able to, um, you know, to time them, have more coordination so that we're not trying to do the, you know, the meat of the transportation, the, the, uh, master plan at the same time that we're doing the Littleton Boulevard Subarea Plan, um, and several other of these big capital projects. Um, still might feel like there's a, a lot happening, but at, at least there's, there's more coordination. And that's what, what I've said we, we just have to have, so.
What are people going to call this? Is this going to be, so I've heard three names. I've heard PMIS, Smartsheet, and I think you called it. And you also called it Control Center.
So Smartsheet, Smartsheet is the delivery tool. Yeah, it's the software.
You also said there was Control Central.
So Control Center is a, um, the automation feature of Smartsheet, also all part of that system, but we call it the PMIS.
Which is catchy for marketing.
Yeah.
Well, it's.
We can come up with a better term.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not. I just want to be able to communicate with people when they, like, if they come up, like, if they, I, I interpret if someone comes up to me and talks about procurement system, I say, oh, that's Workday. Am I wrong?
Yes.
Okay, great. See, I'm trying not to be wrong this time.
Integrated, but they are separate systems.
Procurement's part of integrated into Workday. Workday's the big.
Yeah, I don't, I, I think you just said I was right.
Sure, we'll go with that, Robert.
Okay, I'm done. Let's go to our next meeting.
Any other questions or comments?
I mean, I think this is really important and, uh, hopefully can make our organization, uh, more efficient. And I'm having some deja vu and some kind of, I won't say hesitation and frustration, because I was sitting here eight years ago when we did priority-based budgeting, was very, very similar. I realize it's not project management, but it was based on programs. And we had a, a, a tactical advisory committee. We had, it was a, a culture change. It was a, um, a software involvement. We spent two and a half years implementing that, going through what I'm seeing here, had a, a dashboard, a public dashboard, explaining all of our projects and things like that. And that just went away, disappeared. We haven't had a good explanation. And as you said, seventy percent of these fail. And so how, if we're going to spend this much time and effort to do this, how can we be assured that it's going to be successful? Because there was a lot of frustration with staff going through the implementation of priority-based budgeting. And there was a lot of frustration when it went away. And so this is, these are things that we need to kind of think about. I mean, if it's successful, it's great, but I don't want to be sitting here in eight years and saying, we're going to redo it again. Because literally, we had this same presentation eight years ago, and how it's going to do all this, how the public's going to say, I can find this project, I can find this and see where it is, and I still haven't heard why we tried to do that.
It wasn't Adrian.
It wasn't Adrian. No, it wasn't Adrian.
No.
So, I know, I'm just, I'm just, when I was written, this is literally what we did with, uh, priority-based budgeting. And so I think it was important, because that's what we said, is hey, these are important, to make sure that we are organized. And, um, I think it's a great thing for us to do that and to help go through that one, internal staff understands what's going on across silos, uh, council understands, and that the public understands. And that was what we were kind of sold with, with that, and that kind of feel like a monorail. Simpsons reference.
Right?
A monorail.
Monorail. So I just, I mean, I think it's, I, I really like this. I really hope it's successful. I think it's.
I'm too old.
And, and that's the thing, because I'm the only one that was here during.
And if you're here in eight years, something went wrong.
Yes.
And that wasn't meant as an attack. I was just trying to count. Other times.
I just wanted, I just wanted to get that out there, because as I'm going through, I'm seeing this. And so I just want counsel, because sometimes when we have a lot of councils, a lot of the.
Do we know what the breakdown was?
Huh?
Do we know what the breakdown was?
Well, I can tell you that three years ago, um, we were at a kind of crossroads with a priority-based budgeting system, um, where we were, um, about to embark on a Workday, or at that point, we were still trying to figure out what, what ERP was, was going to be systemed. And also the need to move to the next level of, um, project allocation within, within priority-based budgeting. And I was hearing from some key staff, we just can't do both at the same time. At the same time, I was seeing the need for more strategic planning at the, the council level. The priorities that we had were more of a year, year-to-year, um, framework. And so, um, we decided at, at, at that point that we needed to anchor the, the council's, uh, you know, strategy to a more, a, a longer-term, um, you know, planning framework that we, we now have in place. And then when we got there, um, you know, we were, we were at that point getting into Workday, and it was going to be too much, again, still, to do both. At this point, I think two weeks ago, our, our, our new budgeting team, who, you know, were all familiar with the, uh, priority-based budgeting, um, core team for that, that company, they've been bought and sold a, a couple of times. I've been talking with them, you know, over these few couple of years to make sure they know where we are, when we're ready to re-engage. Um, and I know our team met with them about three weeks ago to just kind of say, okay, here's where we are with the strategic plan. It's still my priority that we integrate the strategic plan, um, with the budget first. Um, but I know that priorities, priority-based budgeting has some really great AI tools that I, that I think, and our team is excited about implementing, um, when that time is right, when we can bring the, the budget that, um, you know, integrated with the strategic plan and the priority-based budget framework that I, I know the mayor's familiar with, and some other folks will recognize it when we, we get back to it. But it's really been about, you know, sequencing all of this work and just what I was hearing from our key staff at the time, where we, we really couldn't do all of them.
But are we going to hear from staff saying, oh, to implement this new software and culture change is going to set us back even farther to not be able to do things that we were planning on doing or with other, other software or other management systems that we have in the city here?
Well, I think we're going to be cautious with how we kind of build new budget, build these next budget layers.
And I mean, it wasn't specific to the budget, it was specific to having a culture change in software, spending time and money, and basically equity in our staff doing that, and then it just, it didn't result in the, the benefits.
I'd like to hear more from you about how that, that felt, um, from the, the council level, so that we can avoid that. Um, so we can.
And I, I only bring it up because I'm just looking at this, I'm like, I mean, I realize it's a totally different product and system, but it was just the, it was like a mirror image of why we're doing it and how we're doing it, and kind of the end result. But it's a little bit different, I'll say, scale.
As someone who's currently trying to develop, uh, software and get all of my DAs to use it, um, seventy percent failure rate is looming over me. Uh, but I am quite confident in this, and I think you have a good plan in place. So, yeah, I think this is eminently important to have a sort of centralized project management system. I'm so glad that.
Is it written under her contract that she can't leave until it's successfully implemented?
And to, to, to really show the rest of the organization how important this is. And by bringing this to city council, all we're doing is elevating this. And, you know, this is a really important tool, and, and we are getting that buy-in, but it, it is incremental. And we're continuing to, again, be very intentional with how we do this, um, and it, it will take time.
Anything else, council?
Well, looking forward to getting going. Keep us updated. I know Robert's looking forward to seeing the planner on the dashboard.
I, I am looking forward to it. I love a good dashboard. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, any report or update before we adjourn the study session from attorney, anything?
No, thank you.
Jim?
I do have one.
Okay.
So I know, um, this week, the city's kind of, I think, taken a good next step toward greater inclusivity for our, our residents. Um, we're launching a new, um, translation or, I guess, yeah, uh, translation service so that all of our reported and, and our public meetings will be, um, will feature a dedicated Spanish translation option available both, um, in a dubbed audio track and Spanish closed captioning, um, via the city's YouTube channel. So you'll be seeing more about that from our, our communications team, but I wanted you to hear that. That's something we've wanted to have, um, more of, and this, this is good for us to be able to offer that. That's all I have there.
And then I would just want to invite council and anyone in the public to attend next week's meeting. And our, we'll call, we're going to go on our first annual council ugly holiday attire night. Since Reed and I have worn our ugly Christmas suits.
Wait, it's not today?
It is not ugly?
Uh, you, well, beauty is the eye that beholder, but I just encourage council, because I'm usually, I'm usually, it doesn't have to be, I don't think my suit's ugly.
Oh, okay, just a.
It's just the term. Is this ugly? No. But just, obnoxious, there you go. Obnoxious holiday attire. If you think it's ugly, you can wear it. If you think it's beautiful, wear it. But usually I'm the only one up there wearing a absurd costume, so we'll invite council to. Yes, other people will do it, and other, and members of the audience, I know Jim wore a jacket last year, and Reed wears his. And so just, I just wanted to put that out there.
There's a number of suits.
There you go.
Yeah.
I have a rotation.
Okay.
I have to refer back year by year to figure out one.
A number of Christmas.
I will be out next week, no matter what, with the baby, so.
Yay, you'll send us a message.
You're going to name it Roberta? Her, name her Roberta? Does anyone know?
With that, I'm going to adjourn the study session. So we're going to be adjourned. We've got to sit here for a little bit, and we've got to wait for a thumbs up for the special meeting to start. We'll start a special meeting, and then, uh, I'm going to make a motion to go past ten o'clock if we need to. I don't think we'll need to, but I just don't want to.
Good night.
Good night.
Yeah, good job. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
No, after.